Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco School Board Committee meeting for September 10, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Would like to make note of all school board members present with Superintendent Ray, and would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
All right, item number three this evening is the approval of the school board minutes dated August 27, 2025. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor.
School Board Member Truman?
I approve. I approve. I move we approve the school board meeting minutes dated August 27, 2025.
Motion has been made by School Board Member Truman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by School Board Member Richards. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, roll call vote. School Board Member Warnoff?
Approve.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richards?
Yes.
School Board Member Roach?
Yes.
School Board Member Kitter?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
And School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, there are no adjustments to the agenda this evening. There are no correspondence. Taking us to item number six, this public session. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address the school board.
Holly Tradier, speaking on behalf of the Saco Education Association.
Anne Marie Ramsey, out of the Saco Education Association, and at 41 Salpines Drive, Saco Maine.
The SEA would like to commend the Saco School Board for a policy you are considering approving this evening. Policy EBB, Temperature Standards for School Buildings, shows a shift in thinking. Almost exactly one year ago, the SEA presented our concerns about buildings being too hot for students and staff and asked for the school board to consider a policy very similar to the one you're voting on this evening. This policy recognizes that now in Maine, not only are we faced with inclement weather due to cold, but also due to heat. Heat. This new policy addresses that. We are grateful for your concern for all the people working in our school buildings, adults and students. Thank you for amending this policy to reflect our changing conditions as a state.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Cronin. I reside at Ten Mary Avenue in Saco, a member of War Two.
Natalie Lacourse, and I am a member of the SEA.
I also am a member of the SEA, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of them. I am the Chief Negotiator for the Saco Education Association Instructional Support Staff. That includes the EdTechs 1, 2, 3, Administrative Assistants, Secretaries, and LPNs. This evening, I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to the Saco School Board, and in particular, to school board members Beth Johnson and Sarah Truman, and also Superintendent Ray, for your partnership and dedication throughout our recent negotiations. What began as a discussion around a potential wage scale and contract rollover almost a year and a half ago ultimately involved into a thoughtful, constructed, three-year collective bargaining agreement extending through June 30, 2028. At the start of the 24-25 school year, we were facing 27 open educational technician positions. This year, we began with only eight positions unfilled. I firmly believe that this significant improvement is a direct result of the wage increase established through our agreement. The negotiation process was not without its challenges. It required time, effort, compromise, and most importantly, mutual respect and a shared commitment to supporting our students and staff. Both sides gave and gained, working diligently to craft an agreement that reflects the values and the priorities of all involved. I wish to express my deepest gratitude to everyone who participated in this process for your time, your open-mindedness, and your hard work. Your efforts have made a meaningful difference for the professionals who support our students every single day and for the broader community as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, that is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Ray?
All right, good evening, everyone. Good to see you out here tonight. First and foremost, I want to just big thank you to Don and his crew and Andrew for all the work that they did this weekend. When you have a school and water, well, actually, when you get a call on Sunday from Don and Wendy with pictures, I mean, you look on your phone, you're kind of in the middle of things, didn't really look that bad. Then Don says you're going to cancel school tomorrow, and he's like, all right, I guess it's time to drive over. But the amount of work that those guys did the last couple of days is twofold. There's one, they're solving the task, and then there's two is looking at the short and long-term costs that are associated with that. And Don and his crew come up with, and again, not just Don and his crew, because Public Works were there all weekend with guys, and codes is out, and they're all pulling together to make sure we're back, and then being able to open school and thankful to Poland Springs, who with a quick phone call says, yes, you can have a thousand bottles of water if someone comes and picks those up, but just great effort by everyone, we're back in school. And who knew that back what, what year was it built, '62, Don? Who knew that in 1962, everybody felt that you'd take a water pipe and encase it in six feet of concrete? Like, I guess that's what you did back then. Made a little challenge and a fix, but great job for that crew. So, round of applause for that, for those employees. Couple of other items. Young school launched this Be the Yellow initiative today, inspired by the Adam Peterson book, Yellow, that focuses on kindness, community, and service. Students participated in service projects around the school today and left some lovely yellow handprints everywhere. I hear paint was in a lot of different places. So, they have another, they have another celebration for veterans on November 5. Just a reminder that the Bitterford-Saco Rising Family Engagement Event on Thursday, the 18th, is from 4:30 to 6:30 at Bitterford High School. It's about bringing our community connections together. There'll be free childcare, transportation going between both cities, community resources, and if you want more information, you can get that online. We've completed the upgrade on our websites to a new platform to hopefully enhance communication. Obviously, learning the new websites always is like, I'm still looking for where I can find collective bargaining agreements, and it takes me, I'm just used to the old way. But it also helps integrate with our social media platforms and our apps, and so it will hopefully make things better and make communication easier. We are partnering with Maine Health to provide flu clinics for our students this fall, and you can find information on the website. It wasn't too long ago, five or six years ago, when we started having elementary cross-country with Saco, Bitterford, Dayton, and St. James Schools. We're at like 150-plus kids at Burn School participating, and we're going to be probably over 300 kids, kind of area-wide. I think when we first started things, we had a goal of like, all right, maybe we can get 100 kids out after school, and that certainly has grown, whereas each year it seems like April's asking me for more coaches, a little extra stipend money, but when you think about it, it's an activity for kids where parents don't have a cost, because there's so much cost in youth athletics today that is such a positive. And then when you bring in Ashley Potvin and Running Passion into the equation, who organizes the Shoe Jamboree, which will be this coming Sunday, September 14, that for $20 or kids that need it, you can get a free pair of running, you can get running shoes. And, you know, I know that this only goes, like, you think about it, and when you say, hey, all kids are going to have the same set of sneakers, and then sometimes you walk in your school buildings and kids can be separated by the, you know, what some kids have and some don't. But when you look at the finish line and you see 300 kids all running in the same set of sneakers and the same uniforms from different communities, it's really a cool sight, because you know that you've done the right thing by bringing people together to make sure that everybody's prepared. So, thank you to Ashley for that. Also want to thank Saco Food Pantry, Saco Grange 53, Roos Reusable, Jack Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram, Codwell Bankers for their donations for back-to-school supplies, Backpack Program. That goes a long way. So, just a lot of good things going on, and entertain any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Superintendent Ray? School Board Member Truman?
Not really a question, but I just wanted to extend my thanks to Mr. Mears for extending an invitation to participate in the Be the Yellow. I'm sorry I couldn't make it, but I was very happy to see that. I just wish I could have been there, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item eight, that is the Chair's Report. School Board Chair Preble?
Nothing new to report this evening.
Thank you. There are no staff reports. Item number 10 is Board Subcommittee Minutes. Item A is the Policy and Personnel Committee. Minutes are attached to the packet. Next meeting is 9:24 at 3:30. Item B is the Finance and the Infrastructure Committee Meeting. Next meeting is 9:24 at 4:30. And item C is the Curriculum Committee. Minutes and agenda are attached in the packet, and the next meeting on 9:22 is at 4:30. Okay, item 11, there is no old business this evening. Item 12 under new business. Item A is new hires. There is a memo in your packet, but there is no motion needed this evening. Item B is resignations. There is a memo in your packet, but no motion is needed. And item C is a stipend memo, memo in your packet, and is there a motion?
Madam Mayor.
School Board Member Truman?
I move we approve those listed in the stipend memo and issue a stipend contract for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you. Motion has been made by School Board Member Truman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by School Board Member Johnston. Any discussion on this item? Okay, roll call vote is School Board Member Warnoff?
Approve.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richards?
Yes.
School Board Member Roach?
Yes.
School Board Member Kitter?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
And School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item D is a building update.
So, really, actually, since our last meeting, there's been very little to update people on, because we are in the bid process. Certainly, answering questions from all of the contractors who are interested in the project, so things will be kind of quiet for the next 30 or so days until we hit that date on October 8, the Wednesday night, I think it is, the school committee night at 2 o'clock, when we will open bids. We did have a large group there, and I think we are planning to do the bid opening, actually in this room, was kind of the hope, just so that everybody has space and we weren't jammed into 90 Beet Street like we were the other day.
Thank you. Item E is an enrollment update.
So, every time you write a memo about enrollment, you just like wait a couple hours and it changes. So, I was going to ask for you to get out your pens or pencils, and I'll just update you where we are at this moment. As of today, I have a live spreadsheet that syncs every night, so I can just get the updates every single day. We're at 1905 for our enrollment elementary-wise, with 144 ML students on that list, 18 pending, and that will be for testing. I received the spreadsheet the other night from Marsha at TA yesterday, and we are at 895 kids, and Martha and I and Jen will work on the enrollment piece there over the next month as we come up on the October 1 reporting date, and then that's usually finalized by October 30 at the DOE.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? School Board Member Roach?
On the spreadsheet of the report, you said, well, 18 ML. It's on the pre-K line, but do you mean that's pending for everything?
Yeah, that's pending at the pre-K line, because those students haven't been tested yet.
And then the eight, what'd you say, 895?
895.
What was it at this time last year?
I think our budgeted number was 905.
Not budgeted, the first report from TA, I mean, you might not have.
You're really testing my memory on that one, Kevin, but you give me two seconds and I can, I can tell you. I know we ended the year at exactly 900, I believe it was, September, but if you look at last year, September 1, 902.
902, basically the same.
Anyone else? Okay, item number F is the Beginning of the Year Principals Report, and I do believe we have a slideshow.
Thank you for the opportunity to share updates following our pre-summer board meeting. Over the past several months, the Special Services Department has worked diligently to prepare for the 25-26 school year. Our focus has been on ensuring strong systems, high-quality training, and seamless service delivery, so that we can meet the high expectations for student learning and support. So, our opening days involved targeted professional learning sessions held both at the pre-K 5 and then the 6-8 levels. The trainings were designed to ensure that all staff, teachers, specialists, oh, thank you. Specialists and educational technicians have consistent understanding of how to access student IEP and 504 materials in acuity. While staff have had access to this platform previously, the review was important to establish shared practices across the district. A major goal is to eliminate the need for paper copies, which create, can create confidentiality concerns, and instead rely on secure, real-time digital access. This ensures that everyone on a student's caseload can view the items and the most current documents, immediately supporting compliance, efficiency, and reinforcing student access. Some of the summer project outcomes that we talked about in the beginning of the summer, some of the goals, and now the outcomes. We did end up hosting an IEP boot camp training. This was a targeted training session, and it was provided to staff. We had 12 people attend, volunteered, with the goal of reinforcing compliance practices, strengthening case management, and ensuring proficiency with our platforms. The training emphasized real-world application and consistency, preparing staff for a smooth start to the school year. We had a very successful ESY program, serving multiple students, and helped to maintain the students that qualified academic, functional, behavioral, and developmental needs. The department goals we have for this year, we're looking to continue to streamline our compliance and workflows. So, right now, we are maintaining that all students need to have all documents submitted on time. Now, we're defining what that on time looks like and a target we're looking for. So, we're looking for 100% on time, but we're looking for at least 80% compliance with 100% overall as the goal. So, if all of our staff can become 80% compliant, then we've met our goal, and we can continue to grow next year to make sure that we're meeting all of our mandated timelines. The second goal is to continue to have the staff training and proactive and positive supports. With the updates to Chapter 33, it's important that all our staff understand what restraint and seclusion mean, what proactive deescalation strategies are, and what inclusion means across all of the environments. So, the start of this school year has been marked with intentional planning, summer preparation, and clear goals for the months ahead. The Special Services Department remains committed to compliance and transparency, and mostly importantly, ensuring that every student experiences success through supports and services that they need. In addition, we'd like to thank all of the administrative staff for their support over the summer and in the support of all of our goals each and every day of the school year. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments? School Board Member Kitter?
Yeah, so regarding the Chapter 33, is that the one that changed over the summer? Yeah. So, I know you said that we already have low numbers. How do they compare to the rest of the state right now, and do you see that changing at all with the new guidelines?
We have, I think, overall compared, if we look at comparing to where we were to where we are now, we're almost, I mean, we're 98% decrease. One of our schools had zero instances of restraint or seclusion last year. So, I'm happy to say that our rates, our numbers are incredibly low. To get the comparison data, I'd be happy to do that and look across districts. We've done a lot of comparison just within kind of our own area.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one of those things, when you look at the comparison data, too, just also remember, just brings that forward, that we do our best to program for as many students in district. So, you could, where we have programs that deal with some very difficult children in a smaller district somewhere that may not have access to that program or ability, you may see a kiddo who's out of district. So, that would just be one thing I'd want to caution us about, if you were trying to look for an apple to an apple.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Next up is Jamee Walker, the pre-K Director and Special Services Site Administrator.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to share some highlights from our opening days, summer work, and the goals we're setting for the school year and pre-K. We begin the year with our second split start. Half of our students attended on September 2 and the other half on September 3, before the full class came together on September 4. This model gives teachers the chance to get to know children in smaller groups, provide more individualized attention, and set the stage for a positive and supportive classroom community from day one. At the start of the school year, our staff attended a Linkit training. This tool will help us gather consistent data across classrooms, monitor student growth, and better inform instruction throughout the year. An added benefit for this type of progress monitoring and documentation beginning in pre-K is by the time our students transition into kindergarten, they will do so with a strong foundation of data collection to support their learning needs. Looking ahead, we have two major goals. First, all pre-K teachers will utilize Linkit for fall, winter, and spring assessment windows. This consistency will give us a clear picture of student progress throughout the year. Second, we are introducing the Learning Without Tears Handwriting Curriculum across all pre-K classrooms. Materials have been purchased using grant funding, and our pre-K ELA team member is working to ensure consistent practice across classrooms. We plan to finalize our implementation plan by October 2025, with practices in place by January 2026. I'm excited about the year ahead. By strengthening our assessments and introducing a research-based curriculum, we're building a strong foundation for our youngest learners, and I'd like to thank you for your support in making this all possible. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, all set. Thank you very much.
Sure. Next up is Wendy LeBlanc, Principal of Fairfield School.
Good evening, everyone. Wendy LeBlanc, Principal at Fairfield School. Smooth start, I would say. I'll get to the, this week later. We had great support from our PTO. They welcomed our staff with a nice luncheon. We did popsicles in the park for open house. They even did a balloon arch, which was awesome. And so, they're just always supporting us through everything. We also did K Visit Day, and what that is, is two hours where kindergarten students come, they get to spend time in the classroom, take a bus ride. This is the third opportunity that they get to come into the building before the actual start of school. So, in June, we have a Step Up Day, and August, we have the Open House, and then in September, we have a kindergarten Step Up Day. And then, most of our time at this grade level is explicitly teaching routines. So, we spend the first six weeks in small group classrooms, large areas, defining what our expectation is, modeling it, practicing it, revisiting it, right down to how you line up. You say line up, that has to be explicitly taught, practiced, encouraged, and so we do that in all areas of the room. And apologies, because Jeff's probably, Mr. Mears is probably in the same boat with some of those things. So, that was all very smooth until Saturday, when Andrew Saxka's name came on my cell phone, which is not anything that's ever happened, and I thought, oh, no. I would have to say that Andrew and Don Roth saved Fairfield. The impact that we might have experienced without their dedication, knowledge, leadership, organization, communication was just, it's just amazing. And it also, I think, shows the respect that they must have in the community. Within that day on Saturday, when the alarm went off that we might have an issue, Andrew was in his vehicle, Don was in his vehicle, and they were headed right on site. The next morning, by 7:00 AM, they were there with Maine Water Company and Public Works drilling, like drilling into the building on a Sunday morning, and of course, it was the first Sunday that rained forever. Also, by Sunday night, we didn't really know how long of a waiting wait we would have for other support, but Shaw Brothers just kind of dropped or figured out how to kind of save us. Jim Gudboo and his organization, Maine Water Company, they've just been there the whole time. Johnson Controls, Siemens, and I just can't say how impressed I am with the community and those organizations and Don and Andrew for keeping me in the loop. I could make a slideshow if you guys wanted to see the whole process. It's been pretty phenomenal. And then Poland Springs, I think Mr. Ray had asked for water at about 3:00. Don had teamed there by 3:30, and we were unloading water pallet, water pallet by 4:15 that very day. So, smooth start, but unexpected, which is kind of the world we live in, and the team was just phenomenal. So, much appreciation to Don. Hopefully, he can sleep at some point and for saving Fairfield. That's my new thing. I welcome any questions. Obviously, if they're about that, I only know a little, but any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? School Board Member Roach?
I was going to ask Jess to keep you not having to be up there asking, answering things, but the front room where the water main break was is, is that, is that the special education room?
Yes, it's a small room where we provide SDI.
So, that, that's, that will be not usable, right, for?
Correct, but for a very short time. We're thinking a week, a week and a half, and it's minimal damage that was done in there, because they were so fast arriving. So, currently, that instruction is either happening pushed into the classroom, or we've put up a little divider, which the kids are calling. put up a little divider, which the kids are calling a fort or a tent, in the hallway.
And just a personal thanks to Don as well for me, but also, he's got, the city's got this video, which you may have seen, of the actual geyser breaking Saturday morning. So if that's public and posted, I'd love to share that. But, but again, thank you again. Thanks.
Pretty crazy process.
Yeah. I live across the street from Fairfield and saw all the trucks and the cars coming and was going, what's going on? And then my husband on Sunday said, Johnson's Controls is there, it's serious. I said, we'll find out. So good. And again, yeah, Don, thank you to you and the staff and all of the contractors, and it's just the collaboration of the city and our outside contractors all working together that just proves that we can get the job done. And again, you know, huge, huge thanks. You were telling me the stories on Monday night, and we can appreciate and thank you more. Hey, anyone else? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mears, Principal of Young School.
Thank you, Wendy. We've had a great start to the school year. It's fun because we have a handful of new staff, and it's really fun watching them get their classrooms settled and just kind of start their craft at our school. It's also our P T O. We had a wonderful start, where we had a great breakfast, and we had P T O that did some research on what staff has wanted over the last two to three years, and they purchased a ton of stuff that they put out on the table for us to grab for what we needed, which is really, really cool that they put that much thought into that. So thank you to the P T O. Our summer projects, we put a new entrance sign where, for the main entrance sign, because it's like not always clear when you go to Young School where the main entrance is. So we have some more signage coming. As you see on the pictures there, we painted the sheds. Yesterday, we also planted flowers today for Be the Yellow, which is based off of Yellow by Adam Peterson. So we're trying to teach kids kindness and really about thinking about others than, other than selves, easy for me to say. So we just had a great start to the school year. Some of our goals this year, 100% of our staff will be understanding the clear guidelines for Tier Two and Tier Three, and what I'm saying to them, if it's not on paper, it does not exist. So that's kind of where we're at. We're also looking to support our staff that's piling in C K L A and also K for Me and First for Me, where we'll have regular observations throughout the year. Instead of like just looking at after N W As where, oh, they, you know, they're scoring here or there, we want more regular check-ins on how we're doing, what we're thinking about it throughout the year. Well, our team leaders will have that as an item, action item, every other week, if not maybe once a month, depends on what the needs are, just so we have a clearer picture of what's really best for us with the C K L A and K for Me. So that's kind of where we're at. I'm really excited about that. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions or comments? School Board Member Kitter?
Just one.
Yeah.
I think another goal should be a new dumpster.
A dumpster does smell bad, and it smells like sour milk and manure today. Today, that's when they come and empty it, and there's some leaks or something, and then there's a puddle that comes out. Yeah, it's pretty gross. So maybe we just need to call them and bring a new dumpster, but yes, it's pretty gross. Yes. Thanks for sharing.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Ms. April Noble, Principal of C K Burns.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having us. I'm excited about the opening. It feels like we never left. I think I'm fortunate that the kids are really acclimated and have done some time at school before they come over to C K Burns. The biggest eye-opener is like how big, and the worries are, am I going to get lost? And no one ever does. So it's been a really smooth opening, and teachers have been really, you know, taking good care of teaching our routines and expectations. Some of the things that I wanted to highlight was that with our new pilot teachers that Jeff was just talking about, we were able to invite 100% of those classes in for their assessments. And so that's, rather than just random selection and a half of a class being invited into Assessment Day, all of those students were invited, and it gave them another sneak peek into their classrooms being all set up. So that was great. And then we also tracked our attendance. Out of the 450 students who were invited to come in for an assessment, we had 320. So we are well on our way of having that foundation of understanding of what kids are successful with and what their needs are before we even begin on day one. So great turnout there. And the principals and the directors worked really collaboratively around trying to get our pre-K five staff together, knowing that we're going to be working together in the near future. We're trying to collaborate as much as we can and build relationships and a strong community of those staff. So we had a lot of fun with a barbecue and some get-to-know-you activities before we all had our very first staff meeting all together. Meg Parkhurst came over to Burns, and we were able to fit everybody in the gym for the afternoon of training. So that was a great start. Our summer projects that we had going on and the success of them was that our S E L, our staff provided professional learning all three days, and they worked throughout the summer with both Mr. Partridge and myself around what that would look like. We added a new component to our master schedule called Classroom Connection Time. Many people probably knew that as like morning meeting or a collaboration, but we now have some common language and some common expectations around what that looks like. And we provided staff with resources and activities and some real modeling for them around what that time will look like and should look like, and offered support for them. That's going to be some ongoing work that we do throughout the year. And today, we actually got to follow up on one of our P D times around restorative practice and what that looks like when there might be a problem out on the playground, and how do you solve that as a class. So really excited about the resources that teachers received through our Sweetser Grant. Everyone has some real good hard copies and some key components for how to implement all of that. We are looking forward to like how to support teachers with all of those needs, building that climate and building that culture and building that community, also working on truancy and coming to school on time. Those restorative circles and that morning classroom connection time starts the minute they walk in the door. So when students are late, it's hard for them to be part of that. So we're really encouraging on-time attendance, and our resiliency coordinator works very closely with families around attendance and truancy. And one thing that has, we've been discussing as of late is we have one resiliency coordinator for a school of 630 students and 100 staff. Like the primary schools each have their own. We would be looking forward to some more support, perhaps in the model of an ed tech to support that resiliency coordinator, so the coordinator could use her teaching skills in order to do a lot of the work with families and kids and teaching classrooms, and an ed tech could support some of those ongoing needs with some days and some of the things that support, a person could help her with. So our goals this year, we set these goals in the spring, and we've refined them now to kick off the year, that we are working collaboratively with pre-K, Young School, and Fairfield around our R T I practices. And our hope is that we will have all of our meetings running uniformly across all those buildings, so that when we come together in three years, people won't be learning new protocols and procedures, and we'll all be doing things the same way. We all have the right, the right intentions, and we all have the same goal in mind, but we don't go about it in the same manner, and we don't want folks to have to learn all new procedures and expectations and paperwork when we come together in two buildings. So that's our first goal. And then the second goal is to offer at least four optional professional development sessions in addition to the ones that are offered during our abbreviated Wednesdays, to support that pilot program of C K L A and to support our Building Fact Fluency, which is a component of the Arika Math. So being able to support both literacy and math for additional professional development. And our hope is that we will see 75% of our teachers taking part in those professional development learning opportunities. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I was just looking at the, sorry, I'll ask a question. So this is the year at Burns has, you're maxed out with students, right? This is?
Well, we'll still accept them if they're Saco residents.
You still have room, but, but it is.
We have no classroom space, but we are, we're ranging between 19 and 23 in every classroom.
You mentioned that you're looking for support. What's the, what's the volunteer policy to help with, you know, I don't know, lunchtime, recess, after-school, helping kids get on the bus? Is there, is there volunteers that could, that could help, help you guys at all?
We could certainly implement a volunteer in that capacity. I have experience using volunteers before, and when a volunteer doesn't show up and you rely on them, that can be really challenging. But we would always welcome additional volunteers. Our ratio is that we have three staff that are outside every recess, and then we also have additional staff supporting students with special needs. So there's a minimum of three. Teachers would love more. I'm not willing to let, have less than three out there for safety reasons. Same in the cafeteria. We have two staff that are monitoring each side of the cafeteria. We also have additional ed tech support in the lunchroom for students with special needs. Administration's often down there, kind of in and out as well. But volunteers to help out in that capacity is great. But if you're asking about the policy, a background check and filling out the form is pretty simple. It's in the superintendent's update, it's in my Samora's update, it's very easy to find in the community section on our website. And we would love to have some regular volunteers in the school. It does take about two to three weeks, once that paperwork's filled out, but it is a quick form to fill out, and then the turnaround time is two to three weeks, and we can have people in the building.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to apologize and hope that we didn't have too many complaints with the library parking lot closed, with parents dropping off and picking up.
Well, I would like to say it was a good thing, because we really don't encourage kids and families to park over there. And I think starting off on day one, to get everybody to follow what the expectations and routines are, has been pretty helpful.
But I hope at the end, everybody enjoys the new parking lot, all of the paving, and the whole new structure of the sidewalk system. I think it's going to really be a benefit. But yes, again, like Fairfield, unfortunately, that first week certainly made it a little more challenging and difficult for some parents. So on behalf of the city, we hope, we do apologize, but we hope that everybody enjoys it.
Yeah, we also love the new painted sidewalks that happened. That was great, too.
Yeah, they've done a great job.
Across walks. Next up, Marie Susie.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. So I want to talk a bit before I get into this about some work that was done in the spring at Saco Middle School with consultants Christie Wheeler and Dr. Allison Roy. They came in and collected some data with our school community, students, staff, and parents, through surveys and focus groups. And so our summer project focused, our big project focused around those outcomes. So overwhelmingly, it was found that students have a trusted adult in our school, and also parents felt very strongly that staff cared for their children. So it was great to see that sort of validated the amazing staff and caring staff that we do have for our students. The two focus areas that did emerge were community and academic excellence. So our work beginning this summer and moving through the school year will be to define what that means to us. What does community mean, and what does academic excellence mean? And then we'll take that information and then use that to write goals to then further improve upon community and academic excellence. So our opening days focused around community. Sort of continuing with that theme, we did send our staff out into the community on a scavenger hunt, where they had to solve riddles that had to do with Saco history and Saco landmarks. So if you saw any of my staff members out on opening day, they did not break jail. I allowed them out. So that was a great community building for our staff. We also did a little bit, something different for our open house, in which we had all parents in the cafeteria, which shockingly, we had so many parents, it was overwhelming. So we had a sixth grade presentation and then a seventh and eighth grade, and it was just amazing to see the amount of support that these parents have for their children's education. So that was great. But we did a presentation to them, and we gathered some input from them on, we called them, hopes and hurdles. So what were the, the parents' hopes and hurdles for their children for this year? Again, we're going to use that information to then sort, move through the year and inform our decision-making. Then we also, over the last few weeks, administration and staff met with each grade level of students and also held our first school-wide assembly focused around community, which was a lot of fun. So our goals for this year, continuing with the bar model, if you recall, last year, we did a presentation on that, building assets, reducing risk. We had 26 staff members in June who were part of the next level of training. Last year, we focused on our I Times, which happened in advisory classes, and we'll continue with that model again this year. But adding on, we, our goal is around our weekly meetings. So each, each team, the expectation is to meet weekly with some other people, administration, counselors, social workers, and then use the information we get from I Times and also in class to support students. So our goal is just 90% of scheduled meetings will occur with all those members involved. And then also building on, you know, meeting students' needs, the second goal is around an identified population of students who fall between the 25th and 40th percentile in standardized test scores. We've created a model in which to allow teachers to provide interventions, structured, very structural interventions to the math and language arts piece, but then along with that, students who do not fall in that band will receive enrichment during that time. So there's going to be some other opportunities for students who already are meeting the benchmark, and our goal is for 70% of those students to move out of the 25th to 40th percentile to increase.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? School Board Member Roach?
So I have to ask, how was the drop-off traffic compared to last year with the current construction? Was it?
So terrible. It's always terrible.
It's always, it's, so it's, it was the normal terrible or worse than the normal terrible?
No, it actually wasn't bad, and I have staff on duty who reported actually yesterday that they believe that Superintendent's Ray email out to parents actually made a difference, that we see more students riding the bus and less drop-off and pickup, so.
Okay, so less than the normal terrible.
Yes.
I was going to say, I talked to a few parents who I knew were driving their kids, and they said, it actually wasn't that bad.
Good, good, good.
So they were like, we got there so early because we anticipated like this insane, but I said, I hope it stays that way, so.
And as far as the construction, the end is coming soon.
It's, it's, it is near.
It's right there. We're almost over that hurdle.
Yeah, and the middle school was asked, Marshall, Marshall reached, reached out to Marie and I the other day about having our chorus and band possibly perform at the opening of the exit. So when they're starting to schedule things, you start feeling like that end is really going to happen, which I just, we're all excited about that happening, because I think about living off Boom Road, how quick it's going to be if I'm coming from the south to get home. But this is going to change traffic patterns again. And I think we just have to recognize that we are almost going to have like a second start to the school year. It could be more challenging, or it could be more challenging in a way where it really speeds things up and we're like saying to elementary buses, like, okay, slow down, hit pause, don't be too early for the middle school, or vice versa. So round two will be, be, round two will happen.
All right. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the principals and your staff. We truly appreciate everything that you guys do, and it sounds like it was an amazing first week. Okay, that takes us to Item G, and that is the second reading of policies. Is there a motion? School Board Member Johnston?
Yes, thank you. I move we approve the second reading of policies. I'm sorry. I H B A C, child hind. D K C, travel expense reimbursement. E B, safety program. E E B A, multi-function school activity buses. E I, insurance program and risk management. E I dash R, return to work and reasonable accommodations administrative procedure. And E B B, temperature standards for school buildings. for School Buildings. Second.
Thank you. Motion made by School Board Member Johnston, second by School Board Member Truman. Is, any questions or comments on the policies? Okay, roll call vote. School Board Member Warnoff?
Yes.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richards?
Yes.
School Board Member Roach?
Yes.
School Board Member Kidder?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
And School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, it takes us to Item 13, Other Information. I would like to just throw out to the Fairfield parents, please take note of the parking changes on Willow Avenue as you're coming to the school. It's the dead end on both sides. I do know that our deputy police chief has been working with Principal LeBank to send out notices, and there will be no parking on the Willow Ave sides during drop-off and pickup. Yes, School Board, yep.
I was going to bring this up in the Finance Committee update, but our last Finance Committee meeting, we had just talked general stuff about the year close, and Zach and the team and Jeremy have done just a great job with our finances, but I wanted to speak, and I don't want to put people to sleep, but we do have, our books are actually audited, and it starts coming up now normally, but our auditor has not even signed off on the fiscal year '24 amount of budget, not budget, financials. And I personally, I'm not speaking for the school board, but I've been on City Council, and I'm on the school board, and I've been entrenched in financials, and this is my background, and I find that completely 100% unacceptable, and it affects everything. Yeah, our numbers are in, but we, we then budget off good numbers. What happens if the audit came up something bad here, and there's blame on the schools of misappropriating funds or whatever? We don't want to be looked upon that way. It affects union negotiations. Do we have the money there? We know it's there, but I find it unacceptable that this firm that covers 10 or so communities around here can't get their act together, and if we were a private company, this would be done by now. So I do implore, as a citizen, as a part of the school board, I know it's with the city and with the new city administrator, but this is unacceptable. We have done such hard work, this school department was in deficit, partly coming out of Arshu for some numbers compiled by the same audit firm, and they were forgiven back then, and we did yeoman's work to get the numbers and get, get work done. I credit even a prior finance director and now Zach to make sure we're okay. And I, I was at the City Council meeting last week, and the frustration that was from the counselors, the mayor, everyone, everyone there, and this, this cannot, this cannot go on. And, you know, there's just too hard, we don't want Saco to be looked upon for anything less than, you know, we care about our community, and we get the numbers right, and we are going to fund our schools, we're going to fund our city. So I don't know if the next meeting, there's, there's any sort of, you know, direction we, we give superintendent or, but, you know, mayor's here, and this is being recorded, of course, but I just want to tend, I just want to bring that up. I brought it up in a couple of commissions that I'm a part of, and I'm bringing it up here at the school board, so thank you for the time.
Thank you, Kevin, and you are correct. City is still waiting for our '25 audit. These are actually state-mandated by January. We are not the only municipality in the state that is dealing with this issue. And our interim city administrator, Emily Prescott, right now, she is following City Administrator Behanko's efforts, and she actually just reached out again the other day. We are getting very firm, and this, these are state-mandated, state-mandated audits that all municipalities and school boards need to have, and it is unacceptable, and we have indicated that, so we will keep posted on how we're doing. Thank you. Anyone else with any updates or information they'd like to share? Okay, moving on to Item 15, and that is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by School Board Member Truman. Is there a second?
Second.
Say, nobody want to go home? Second by School Board Member Johnston. Roll call vote. School Board Member Warnoff?
Yes.
School Board Member Preble?
Yes.
School Board Member Richards?
Yes.
School Board Member Roach?
Yes.
School Board Member Kidder?
Yes.
School Board Member Truman?
Yes.
And School Board Member Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes 7-0 at 7:55, and thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening.